All right, Ms. Downey. Okay. All right, I am going in the interest of time. Let's call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, it is weird saying that alone. I'm happy I got that right. Okay, um, first up is the GHS entryway. I'm turning this straight over to you, Ms. Downey and Mr. Walco.
I am the representative of the board on the building committee. I'm going to actually turn it over to Mr. Walco, who is the chair of the building committee, to give a summary of where we are.
Good evening, everyone. You all, I'm sure, have read in the paper, and I know you've received a communication regarding where we are with the Greenwich High School vestibule building project. A truly interesting set of events relating to the cost of this. If you just all would recall, this was slated to have a construction budget of 2.75. We also had 250,000 for soft costs. And the bids, we had two bidders. They came in at 3.91 million and 4.3 million. I should also say that David Stein, the architect, is here with me tonight. And we just received those bids. Those bids were opened a week ago, last Wednesday at noon. Are we disappointed in the results? You bet, and we wish we were here under different circumstances. We certainly appreciate the volatility in markets, but not to the extent that we've seen this project come in at probably the most notable takeaway is just the overall cost per square foot. And while that's not always the best indicator, it is certainly astounding to think that this project came in at effectively somewhere north of 1,500. I know the document says closer to 1,800 or so. But, you know, if you include the renovation area and you include some of the landscaping, although not total drivers, you're looking at a cost that well exceeds the norm, even in the $600 range. So from a building committee perspective, as you all know, all we do is build what you guys tell us to build. We thought we had a good design, certainly one that withstood the scrutiny of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the various other land use agencies. Obviously, the neighborhood, we worked really hard at coming up with a landscaping plan and to address the lack of a front entrance at Greenwich High School. It is, while the building committee didn't take an official position on this in terms of where we go, a robust discussion occurred regarding whether or not we thought we could complete this project within the Ed specs effectively with the current design if we either value engineered it or went out to rebid. And I think it's safe to say, after speaking with the architects, that that is not a viable solution. And so what does that mean in plain English? That just means we do not think we can build a front entrance to Greenwich High in the scope and sense of which it's currently designed for 2.75 in construction numbers. A significant redo would be needed, or alternatively, additional funding. And that can be debated as to what is needed and what is not. This project was not complex in terms of its HVAC systems or trades. As you all know, people called it just simply a glass box, and that's what effectively it was. So there's not much value engineering, but we would sharpen our pencils if you told us, hey, come in at some number north of 3 million, maybe. That would be doable, but we're at your direction. And I think conventional wisdom tells us that if you tell us to build a much smaller security vestibule, not a front entrance to the high school, but effectively deal with the security aspects to it, we will do that. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions, and so is David, and so is Christina, who has been very helpful in just shepherding this through, as you all know, which is a labyrinth of various agencies and people to talk to.
It really is. And so before I hand it back over, I just wanted to, you've done this so many times before. You're infamous for your work on New Lebanon. And so thank you for soldering this through all of the processes. And the fact that I know you've hit another bump in the road is, you know, probably is a bit frustrating, but we appreciate you sort of soldering on. So, um, thank you. I wanted to just let everyone know. I put this on as an action item because that's all you can do at a special meeting if we want to take action. I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that tonight, but let's see how the conversation goes. And we could always put forth a motion to give some sort of direction to the building committee, which is why we have this here tonight. But before I go to questions, Christina, do you want to say anything?
Yes, um, thank you. And thank you to Steve and David for, and David did a lot of jumping through hoops to get as much information for the board as he could within the short timeframe. I think I sent a cover note to the entire board that we have kind of a variety of directions to go, whether we want to ask for an interim request for the additional funds, whether we want to re-scope the project in the sense of what Steve was talking about, make it a vestibule and provide other security measures within the budget. And David will speak to it because I spoke with him about that as well. Or whether, because I know some of you have also asked the questions about putting the project on hold if we think the market is high or if we want to rebid it. So I know people have a lot of questions for David in particular. I think, yeah, I agree with Steve. The committee was very mixed. I think everybody was disappointed. The news about the bids, you know, was not even 24 hours old when everyone heard. And I think there's a commitment to the project, but I also think there's realistic expectations about what can be done. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it back over to you, Kathleen, and you can manage the questions.
Sounds good. I think your hand was up first, Joe. Mr. Kelly?
Oh, hey, thank you. Joe is fine. You don't have to call me Mr. Kelly, but thank you for showing the respect. The, I will begin with saying that I like treating public projects like it was my own project. And it just so happens coinciding with the same timeframe we're working on here, I have got approvals to build four homes in state. And we started on the first home. And as we started buying materials, hiring subcontractors, we noticed recently the price has gone up. Not only has the price gone up, but many subcontractors are not available until January of 2025. So that being said, I can understand why the prices in the temporary situation are very, very high. So in the spirit of treating public projects like my own, I have made a decision to hold off on two of the four homes because of the costs. We understand for at least spec building, you have an increased sale price potential as well, so you could weigh off the two. We don't have that same luxury. We're not selling the high school. We are keeping ownership of the high school and hoping for a better time to possibly build. So that being said, I do have a question for David. David, just to reassure that you're comfortable with, and I believe you're responsible for the projections, for the budget, for the costs, do you think we're going through an anomaly with these costs way over where they should be? Or are you sure of your numbers? And do you think maybe we might have been a little off on our projections?
Yeah, good evening, everybody, and thanks for having me here tonight. And hopefully I could provide some insight, maybe not all the crystal clear answers as we're trying to look forward. I think to try to first answer your question, and hopefully I address it in terms of projecting going forward and seeing whether the market will correct itself. There are already some indications that that would be the case. For example, lumber spiked very early in 2020 when everybody was doing home improvement projects, and that has begun to correct itself. Unfortunately, at the moment, all the lumber yards purchased or manufactured that lumber is still sitting on their property. It's still part of their asset. And they need to, they need to sell that product before they can begin to show, you know, move that discount off to the buyers. So I think there is some indications that there will be course corrections in terms of material and also labor. I can say that when we dealt with the, when we dealt with the recession in 2008 and 2009, prices did go backwards. There was some competitiveness, but the cost per square foot numbers still increased proportionally 4% a year. So I think you'll always be facing some level of escalation, but I don't expect it to be at such a spike that we saw in the beginning, that we have seen in those quarterly numbers that we just received, demonstrate that piece of it. So I am optimistic that there will be some savings to that, but I don't think it will course correct itself back to where we were in any time soon. As just a comparison for discussion, we just received bids last week for a brand new fire station, not comparative to this, in North Bramford here in Connecticut. They held their bids last year when we bid the project. So this is the second time bidding it because they were concerned with the numbers. We did a little bit of value engineering like you're talking about, but virtually the project was somewhat in the same tact. And when we opened them, they were 20% higher. That was a $10 million project last year. It's now essentially a $12 million project. So where we sit in time, this has been something we haven't seen, I guess, since 2008 and 2009. But even then, that was a very short bubble. And then we just saw escalation at 4% compounded every year, kind of moving forward to the last two years. So I'm not sure if that fully answers your question, Joe, and I'm glad to kind of focus in on that, but I wanted to kind of give that backstory and context to it.
Well, it was helpful to understand your view on things. I don't know if we share the same views. I think it's an anomaly we're going through now, and I think course will correct more rapidly than you're mentioning. But I guess in my position, I could speak my mind more freely. You've got to be more broad in your answers, so I fully understand that. Next question is to Steve. Now, Steve, I've seen your work and see you operate before, and you're always fiscally responsible, but you demand quality in your results. In this case here, do you find if we lessen the scope, that we will be giving away too much quality? Or do you think that we should analyze reducing scope?
So that's a complex question for this project because I think my, I, as well as the committee, look at this project in two fashions. It's trying to solve two issues. First and foremost, it's trying to solve what I understand to be the number one security issue at Greenwich High School, which is the fact that a visitor, any visitor enters the building into the main building. And so my understanding of this project or the impetus for this project was to create a secure vestibule wherein a visitor would be secure from not going into the building until they were cleared. The other aspect of this project was to give the Greenwich High School effectively a front entrance. And because quite frankly, if anyone looks at it, I'm not sure anybody says where the front entrance is. And I don't think it's, I don't think many people within Greenwich would say, oh, yes, that's definitely the front entrance. So I'm not sure it's a question of quality. I think it's a question of scope. If you were to eliminate the notion of a front entrance and you wanted us and directed us to build a secure vestibule that would only gain access to the administrative wing, but only after they've been checked in, my instinct, well, it's not even more my instinct. After speaking with David and his team, my sense is we could build that at a very high quality within the budgetary amount. But do I think that that would lead to this concept that you also have a front entrance? I do not, not in the same scope in which we presented it.
Well, thanks. One last comment to you, Steve. Because of your continued success and I've known you for some time, I'm going to lean heavy on your advice on how we should proceed. Thank you.
Ms. Hirsch.
Thank you. I know my question is sort of similar to something that Joe just asked, and this is for Mr. Stein. So I have two questions. You know, I know we're at a historic high for building materials and also wait time for ordering materials. And so my two questions were, you know, if we did decide to defer the project for about six months to rebid, do you think, I know you won't be able to give us any general idea. You just said the cost probably won't come down significantly, but do you think it might come down at all within six months? And or how far back would that put us in order for ordering materials? Because I know in the document that you provided to us, it mentioned, you know, there's a six-month delay for windows, nine-month delay for doors. And as such, because, you know, much like Mr. Kelly, you know, to kind of reduce the scope of this project sort of takes away from some of the, what the intention was. But at the same time, certainly the costs are greater than really we should be, than, you know, that we have budgeted for.
So what's happening here is just as you mentioned, the cost of materials are rising. And then what's hitting head on is really colliding is the supply chain. So if the supply chain can level back out, that could go back to where you were able to source materials in a reasonable time, then the cost to build the building would, and that duration would shorten. In my memo, as I mentioned, both contractors and in within their bid form, we asked them, how long will it take for you to do this project? How much will it cost and how long will it take? Both of them said more than a year. One said 365 days, the other said 420 days. This project does not take a year to build, even with phasing through a fully occupied high school. It's maybe six months would be aggressive, eight months. So based on that, if the materials can be in a course corrects and can be built in a shorter time, the contractor is not holding insurance for that period of time. They are not staffing it. They're not protecting the space. They don't own that site for that period of time. So if that is the case, then yes, there will be corrections in that. When that takes place, I can't predict that, and I don't see the industry predicting that. They are predicting that construction will continue at a relatively good pace to the end of this year, so the end of 2022 and into 2023. So where else will you see sort of the competitiveness of work? As Joe mentioned, contractors do have backlog. And once they lose that backlog, that's when you see the competitiveness of this. And this is a competitive bid. So that's, to answer your question, yes, if things could level out related to supply chain, then I think there are savings there. The question is, does that level at the same time that the materials level off? And I don't think there's any indication that the two will run a parallel path.
So just as a quick follow-up, because I haven't seen the bids myself. The costs were significantly increased based on materials, not on labor. Is that correct?
Well, we received, so as part of the bid, you receive a full just lump sum number from a contractor. They gave us that 3.9 and that 4.3 number. When we scoped the contractors, we asked them if they were willing to open their books and share with us what we call the schedule of values. It's basically the division of responsibility. We ask them what the mechanical number is, their wood number, their steel numbers, and so forth. And we were able to align that with our estimate to see and do a comparison between that. There were glaring differences in the glass and the glazing, significant numbers. And we've heard that aluminum material, for example, was up 40%. And we heard that the duration times were between six to eight months on that. So that is one area where we saw a significant difference from what we projected. Here's where cost per square foot actually is a fair analysis because it's on a granular level. We budgeted $350 a square foot for those windows. They came in at $700 a square foot for those windows when I sort of break down the analysis. Roofing, for example, traditionally, if you were going to roof the high school, the advice would be budget 35, $36 a square foot. We knew because this was a small project and unique, we budgeted 56. It came in at $110 a square foot. That's directly related to the material costs that we've seen large increases on. So as we dissect the numbers, because the contractors were willing to share with us the numbers that they were getting, that gave us to the conclusion that it was really a confluence of events that were happening. Supply chain, cost of material, and the overall duration of the project was also reflective in their number.
And I know it's not typical for them to put a contingency into a contract, whereas if the cost for materials drops in the period of time prior to us ordering them, that they wouldn't reduce that cost. I mean, my father was in construction for, ran a company. So I know that's not a possibility, and even in this day and age, I'm assuming they wouldn't consider.
No, the way the contract is written is this is a lump sum general contractor bid. There were discussions or questions as can we just do this as a cost? Plus, the contractor gives us the bills. We pay them from their time per profit, but that's not how that works in the public bid realm. We do need to go out for a lowest qualified competitive bid. And within that, we're saying you have to complete all this work that's shown on the drawings. You need to take the risk. And with that, they're creating a contingency built into their numbers to be able to do the work for the number that they have projected and in the time that they also projected. So they can't come back and say, well, you know, whether it's taking me a little longer, their proposal was time and the cost.
Okay, well, I'll see other people with questions. So thank you for that information.
Ms. Downey?
Yeah, so I know we can get very bogged down in what the costs were, but I kind of want to take it back to where we, as the board, have to make a decision. So we basically have these two bids, which have an expiration date. I think it's 60 days or 90 days, Steve and David. So basically, I think we have to kind of just decision tree. Number one, do we want to move forward with the project at this cost? If so, we have to do an interim request for the September call. If we don't want to do that, we, you know, so kind of that's decision A. Decision B can be, okay, we're not going to do that. We're going to roll the dice on either a rebid or a redesign, right? So I think that's really where we are tonight. We don't have to make a final decision, but I think, you know, I would like to hear from all the board members, and then we can kind of maybe get a sense of the room, and we may all feel the same way. So I think that, I just wanted to kind of get the conversation moving on a path towards, what do we need to achieve this evening?
I have to agree. I'm happy to sort of put myself out there. I'm up for like the rebid or redesign. I think that it would be, it's a lot to ask for, to go for an interim on this. I think we're going to have other priorities. And this is, I just think, a big, especially given, you know, what's happening in construction. It just seems like the wrong time to be asking, to be pushing this forward at this level. So that's kind of where I'm falling, but let's get everyone else. And if we're in the same place, we could do a sense of the meeting. Michael Joseph?
Yep, sorry, I'm on my phone because my internet decided not to work. I, yeah, I think the, I'm in the same place. I think what we have to realize is what the main purpose of this is, the main purpose of, from my understanding, the main purpose of approaching this, and we, this whole project in the first place, was really to prioritize the security of the main entrance. And I think going back and thinking about that and prioritizing that, as much as we would all love a beautiful entrance, the safety is the priority here, particularly with, as you said, Kathleen, we have, we now have a lot of other competing capital needs.
Whoa, okay, Joe?
Just not clear on the choices. The choices, I believe you mentioned, I got a little mixed up with rebid.
Okay, so basically, I'll give you, if we wanted to go ahead with the bids as is and ask for money, we need to decide that tonight, right? That's number one. If we say, okay, none of us have the appetite for that, then we have the option, we can choose to wait it out and rebid the project. Or in the, while we are waiting for that period of time, David can speak to this, I'm sure. Look at what re-scoping the project would be and maybe get a preliminary design to try to bring it in within budget on the security. And we have, and not to forget, we have accessibility as well. It's not, it's, there was security, a proper front entrance and accessibility for ADA. So, but we could focus on the security and the ADA on a smaller scale than the bigger entrance while we are waiting to decide, depending on what David, and maybe this is the right time for David. I don't know if you have any thoughts on what the design fees would be to do, maybe just a very small scale, like a rendering kind of thing for what might come in within budget, what we'd be looking at in terms of your fees? Because I know we're pretty close to exhausting our full A and E budget at this point.
Right, if I may, the, I guess the question was, we, either we agree and we proceed on asking for additional funding, or we do something else. And so I would not agree with the first option. So something else would certainly be what I would support. So please elaborate on what something else might be.
David, would you be able to weigh in a little bit to Christina's question on what additional cost might be?
Yeah, I, and I think we'd need to, I think it's in the best interest to talk program before we begin to, you know, put a fee out there. What I'm understanding is what you're looking to do is do a relatively quick analysis to see, can we, can we scale down the project to a point where the main focus and goal is related to security and accessibility and meet the functionality of all of that? We've already, I've already had some conversations on that in our mind. I kind of have that visualized as to some possibility. I would like to continue that conversation with the building committee and then formulate a proposal that would better tailor that. I don't think that it is a lot of money to begin to do that, and we can adjust accordingly, knowing where you already are on your budget and don't want to spend any more unnecessary dollars to do that. And if that is to help facilitate a decision that, yes, this, the Board of Ed is interested in downsizing the building, we can, we can do that. And the reason why I'm hesitant of just saying it's going to cost you X amount of money, I think we also need to talk about what does that do to the overall timeline of the building project? And it's also its connection with the state of Connecticut. They need to weigh in on this. So that's why I am somewhat being, pausing on answering your question because I think there's some dialogue that needs to get there. What I'm hearing is your goal, what your option is, is there a goal to downsize the building to stay within your current funding? I do think that's achieved, but you need, I think there needs to be some further discussions to focus in on what can be compromised to make that happen.
Yes, and frankly, the further along we go, I suspect prices will come down, really, so I'm hopeful. Karen Kowalski?
Thank you. So I'm definitely not for going to get interim funding. And I, I think the general sense is based upon who I've spoken with before the meeting and those who've spoken during the meeting are in agreement. So I think the question is twofold, whether, one, we move to shrink this project or table it uh, for a later time. I think my concern in moving forward and trying to shrink this project is what will that cost and what does that look like? And so I don't think we can make a decision here tonight about what, whether or not to shrink it or to table it in general, because we don't know what that will cost uh, and what that looks like. So I think we actually have to wait to understand what the scoping of that would be and whether or not that's currently in budget, or we have to figure out where we're getting that money from. Because quite honestly, at this point, I think the number of projects that we have and things that need to get done, I, I would be interested in just tabling this entire project for the foreseeable future until we can, things change and we can get a better grip on one's spending uh, and things change within, and we can focus on projects that we know need to absolutely get done right away, which includes Central Middle School and Old Greenwich.
Ms. Hurd? Um, sorry. The other question I had had actually was something that uh, Mr. Stein just came, uh, brought to our attention, which is, you know, if we go back in and change the scope um, of this um, and/or agree to hold off and, and rebid this in six months, whatever it might be, um, how long, how will that affect, you know, what our standing with the state? You know, at, at what point does one need to, the approvals, how long from the state, how long are they good for? Like, i- if we don't do this within a year or six months, you know, do we have to then resubmit everything anyway? You know, if this project is reduced, you know, do we have to go uh, back to the state just as if it's a brand new project from the get-go, or is it just a revision? Does that change any timeline there?
So if you, if you pause for a relatively short period of time, your application is still open. There is an expiration date on there, Dr. Jones may remember. I think it may be even been in the letter, usually it's let, it's somewhere within a year or.
Um, I spoke with Chris Cately this afternoon on specifically that point. We have two years from the time of our original approval to sign a contract for that work. If we did it as designed, if we change the design, we do need to go back for another approval. So, but if we, if we back burner it, we have a two-year period um, to make a decision. But if we scale it back, we do have to go back.
Okay, Cody?
I was just gonna say, um, I agree with everything Karen Kowalski said, if you're just taking temperature from people.
So I think that, thank you, I think that everyone was kind of on the same page. I mean, I could try to draft the motion, so a sense of the meeting motion, you want me to do that, Ms. Downey, or you wanna, do you have edit?
Um, I could just, I, I mean, basically, we could just do a sense of the meeting that we give the um, the building committee and the architect. I mean, I'm just, I'm not doing the motion right now. And everybody can kind of do thumbs up, give the architect and the building committee the direction to examine what a scaled back project would look like in terms of timing and cost. Is that what people think would be appropriate? I only see two, uh, I see four, I don't see Michael Joseph, Karen. As long as that doesn't cost any money. Well, I mean, the going back and making an evaluation and then we, it could come back to us, right, David? But the building committee can do nothing right now without some direction. So we're basically, you know, if we, if we want to look at rescoping it, we need to give the building committee a direction to look at this, correct, Steve?
So, yes, I guess my, my pause is, you know, by way of process, it's always the Board of Ed who sets the Ed specs and then gives them to the building committee. And although I hear you that you want the figures, just think of the projects you have now, you don't have the necessarily the luxury of knowing figures for Central Middle School or for Old Greenwich. You have an idea, you have estimates, but you won't really know until either you've paid for an estimator um, that, that thinks they understand and budget what those projects are going to be. And then you vote on it, the RTM and the BET then pass the, the budgetary items. What's a little bit odd in this situation is, if I heard you correctly, you're looking for us to come back to you with the current Ed specs to see if, if I think, I, I think the Ed specs will need to be adjusted if we, if we shrink the, the scope of the project. And unfortunately, that originates with you, not the other way around. We're not, we're not in the business as a building committee necessarily of pushing back to you what we think the Ed spec should be as. And it's, and it's not because we don't want to be helpful, I just don't think that's the right process. If, if, if the Board of Ed disagrees and thinks that that's our role, then we'll of course do it um, and try to be helpful. So I'm, I'm just, it's just a little bit odd that, that the direction is going from us back to you as opposed to you all telling us what to do. From my understanding of the numbers, we are saying to you, at least from the architect's standpoint, that if you want us to build a security vestibule at Greenwich High School, and that's a priority of the board to a, address the security functionality and ADA accessibility to the front, to a front entrance. My understanding and, from the architect is that we can do that. That would, in my estimation, require at least a revision of the Ed specs. If you, if that's not a priority at this time, then we will try to get you some information, but that's really the, the building committee pushing back information to the Board of Ed. And, and, and that gets a little um, out of order, but we'll do our best.
Let me just weigh in there, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, Steve, and I'll have Ms. Downey weigh in because she's been through these processes more than anyone. But what I'm wondering is, since there has been so much work um, done with these Ed specs, is that could um, using our staff, you know, Dan um, and others, um, take that and modify it to make the focus. I mean, I don't want to just, this is, this wasn't in the interest of security. It's not like we should be tabling this one, there are a lot of concerns around security at our high school and many other schools. So I don't want to just table it and say, oh, we don't care about this anymore, because.
Can I make a suggestion? Um, along those lines, I believe we ha, we may be having another executive session on safety and security with um, the chief and Tom Babkowski. Perhaps the board should have a discussion about that in that venue and then go back to the building committee. I don't know, and that's just an idea because we are, because I think when we were having discussions about safety and security, we were not focusing on the high school because we assumed this project was going forward. Um, so I think it comes back into the conversation. I mean, you may disagree with me.
No, that's a really good point. And I think this, this process predates many of the board members here and our, that was the driver of this. And I know Steve can talk to that, um, that the driver of this originally was security at the high school. I mean, I don't want to talk about that vestibule, but um, it's important and I think we've had enough, um, you know, I think there have been issues at the high school that drove this. So um, I don't want to forget about that. I think that that needs to be the focus, um, and maybe you're right, bringing this into an executive session situation. Um, and then just tabling this, we're going to be doing that in the next few weeks, that might be the, a good way forward. But so let me, uh, there's a few hands up, Laura Kossen, you haven't had a chance to speak.
So I just think the building committee has put so much time and effort into this. They had an approved design, everything was, you know, chugging along until we got to where we are with the pricing and the, and the materials. So, I mean, is it harmful to wait six months and, and see where the pricing shakes out? I just hate to, I just hate to take all that work and have Ed specs come back to us and have to, you know, go back to the committee and, and the whole, the whole construction landscape could have shifted again by the, by the time that process shakes out. So I, I just sort of think maybe we pause for a finite amount of time because like you said, security is really the, the important thing here. And, and I just hate to undo all the work that this committee really did. You know, I, I want to really make sure security in and accessibility are, are first and foremost, you know, in our minds, and I just don't want to take all that work and see it um, and see it undone when, when the, when the landscape for materials and cost may be completely different in a few months.
Okay, Ms. Kowalski?
So, I agree with, with Steve, Kathleen, I don't think the building committee can do anything else at this point. I think it has to be tabled, it has to come back and we as, as a board have to decide, that's the process. Um, yeah, I realize that the building committee has put in extraordinary, an extraordinary amount of effort, including Steve and Christina, um, but unfortunately, that's just the nature of volunteer work, right? Sometimes you volunteer, you volunteer, you're all in. Um, I think when all of us were elected for a non-paid position, I think we would be having a meeting almost every other week in the summer either, but we are. So that's just the nature of the beast. Um, but I don't think that the, unfortunately, the building committee can do anything at this point until we decide what we want to do. And what I'm hearing is we just need to table this and bring it back. Because if, he's right, if we're redoing Ed specs, that's back on us.
Okay, so Ms. Downey, do you want to basically deliver the news, the building committee, we're going to table this at this time?
I don't think. I think, I think, I think it's pretty clear that.
Yeah.
I think there's, um, I don't think we, I don't think we even need a motion, because I think it feels that, that everyone feels the same way that we're not rushing to make any decisions. So I think um, I would suggest that we maybe make it part of a safety and security discussion and then that we can decide where we go from there. If we say, okay, we want to revise the Ed specs or we don't, and then, then that's the appropriate venue for that. So I think Steve can easily communicate that to the committee that they get the rest of their summer off, even though we do not.
Joe, did you have something else before?
Just in conclusion, I believe, Christine, you had said this is a binary decision. Either we're asking for the appropriations uh, to move forward with the project or not. I think it's clear that we are unanimously not.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I said the decision tree, so now the next part of the decision tree would be, do we revise the Ed specs or still sit on it, right? See, Michael Joseph, I used an educational term, a decision tree.
Gosh.
Well done.
Uh, Mr. Walco, do you have any closing thoughts for us?
Um, I just would, I, I think, uh, I, I personally like the idea of you going back to your security team as well as the chief. As you know, the, what we've learned is the school is a very complex school, which means it is a very uh, difficult one in terms of security. We've learned a lot about that. I'm sure the people you are talking to know an awfully, uh, an awful lot more than even we do. Um, I would just remind you of, of some of the uh, discussion points for a further discussion by your board, which is P and Z is always going to look at landscaping, please keep that in mind even for your other projects. They are going to look at site and, and that's another uh, sort of lesson learned from our standpoint. Ballistic glass uh, relative to the glass corridor. And I know that's an add-on, not a subtraction, I know you're looking for subtractions, but you know, if you're going to have a robust security discussion, you should uh, be at least uh, aware of that. And um, and, and we look forward to taking direction because certainly everybody on the committee, and I agree with Ms. Kowalski, we, we volunteer and we, we do it gladly on, on building committees. And if you've been on one, there's nothing greater than finishing the project, but it's also giving of your time before then. Um, but we have learned that the, the neighborhood is very concerned about it. Um, and the school community is very concerned about security. So things you already know, but I wanted to make sure uh, we put in our plug-in at least from that aspect.
Definitely. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Walco, you can go and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Good luck.
Thank you, and Mr. David, thank you for your time. I'm sure we'll see you again soon. Thank you. Okay, moving along, I'm just going to put a motion on the table so that we could start talking, um, since we don't have one in the cover sheet. The motion is to approve the CMS Ed specs as presented with the following condition, that the Chair of the Building Committee provides an update at certain points as requested by the board. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Downey, so let me explain to you what I'm trying to do here, and then I know there's going to be lots of discussion. Um, first of all, we have this Ed specs in front of us, which we have to spend a lot of time talking about. Um, and I know there was a change today and I'm going to either ask Mr. Healy or Ms. Downey, who by the way, gets credit for doing the hardcore math and um, figuring out like the key here. Um, so I might have her present that to us. But what I was also trying to do in this update is that the Chair of the Building Committee, who I believe I see on as one of our attendees, Mr. Turner, um, is, this is a process that I know is moving faster than has happened in the past. And I know makes some of us uncomfortable, I know that some people also find that laughable because we still are talking about a building not being really built until like five years, but that's fast um, in, in this world. And um, and so I think that there are some of us that are really concerned about handing this off and not having um, check-ins. Having spoken, I'm also going to have Ms. Downey speak to this because she has the most building committee experience of anyone on this call. Um, but I have spoken to many other people in the community. The building committee, we will have many bites at the apple, guys. The building committee has to come back to us at multiple times. For example, we'll have to approve uh, the design, um, the budget, of course. I mean, that's the biggest part, right? That's going to be on our capital plan. So there will be many times that we will continue to have a say, because as we know, the driver of many things is money. Um, but what I was also trying to do by adding this condition is that when the board says, you know, there is something that we think is a significant decision the building committee is making, we'd like them, Tony, to come and talk to us. Every month we'll be hearing from Ms. Kossen because she's our rep, right? But um, whenever there's a major decision point, I think it's important that we have, hear it at the board level. And frankly, um, the public comes and speaks at our meetings the most, right? So if we add it to an agenda item, we'll also hear from the community, which I think is important. Um, and one of the first things that comes to mind that I know that once we bless these, hopefully Ed specs and hand them off, that I'll be asking about is the energy decision, right? That we've received an interesting email on that. I'm not sure I fully, fully appreciate still the analysis of net zero, but while it's a good goal, I imagine it's also something that would cost money. So I'd like to understand that a little bit, and that's something that I'd sort of say, hey, you know, Tony, now that you've done some work, building committee, can you come back and report to us on that? So that's the idea of that bit of a condition um, in my motion. Um, with that, I think Christina, do you want to take over, or you want me to hand this over to Mr. Healy?
I think, I think the professionals are well versed to, to manage everything. I just, you know, I raised some questions, they've, they've happily answered them or done good explanations, I think. The, the, the charts speak for themselves, I'll let them speak and I'll ask my questions when the time comes or make my points.
So I'm going to turn it over to Roger or Tom, whoever's appropriate. Roger, you're on mute.
So Tom, let me start because I want to address the change that occurred today. Okay, so in talking with folks earlier today, uh, there was a question regarding the amount of classrooms that had changed on the chart from six sixty to the current Ed spec that you have now. And um, I explained to the folks that I wanted to talk with Tom and Fran because they, they do most of the analysis on scheduling and rooms that they need for the different subject matters and all that. And then I take that information, plug it into the thing. So I wasn't really versed on why there were thirty-six classrooms. Uh, the quick answer is it was a mistake. There shouldn't have been thirty-six classrooms, there should have been thirty classrooms. What happened was the science classrooms were also, the science rooms are also counted inadvertently as classrooms. So there's six of those, so those got added and then they stayed as well. Fortunately, they only got counted as eight hundred square foot rooms, not eleven hundred square foot rooms that they are. And I was able to make the modification, I took them out. And I adjusted the square footage for the academic area. And then I went to the very end of the document where we had a program area and we put in the circulation and all that, and I made adjustments there. So bottom line is the square footage for the school went from one hundred and twenty-three thousand change. So, bottom line is the square footage for the school went from 123,000 change to about 117,000 and change, so it was about a 6,200 square foot drop, which I apologize for the error, but it's, at least it's an error in the right direction. And it's, it's a money saver, as far as that's concerned. So it is correct now, and I went through and checked all the other numbers. Think I got them, but I thought that before too. We would hope that anybody notices anything by all means, please bring it to our attention, and we'll address it.
So, and then I'll note, so this basically now addresses, and that's why I think Ms. Downey caught it, the sense of, our sense of the meeting resolution, which was enrollment of 660 plus sizing the cafeteria, so that if the building, if the enrollment were to grow in size, that, that would be appropriately sized for our larger student body, and that, you know, we could always add classrooms down the road, and you know, 50 years, if we, if we grew beyond 660. So that's what this ed spec as presented now addresses. Mister, you, Ms. Downey, did you want to go, or Mr. Healy, can you, maybe Mr. Healy, could you sort of tell us where you stand on this? I know you had some time today on this, and how you arrived at this.
Yeah, yeah, again, I mean, I think that, you know, Roger sort of addressed the issue with bouncing back from the 720 back down to the 660, of being a hybrid and having information from both, but you know, in terms of where we are, you know, the, the predominance of the space is really where, where students will be. You know, that was sort of the goal, is to make sure that we had the right amount of classrooms, which Fran and I, you know, confirmed were correct at 30, and then the six science rooms. And then again, having the larger spaces in the cafeteria, which is really, as you've heard from me before, you know, some of those more flexible spaces, the cafeteria, the gym, when your, when your population grows, you can get creative with rooms and spaces to run classes. But when you outgrow your cafeteria or your gym, it becomes much more difficult to run lunches and, and run PE and things like that. So, you know, based on what's presented now, I think it does articulate what our needs would be at 660. However, it gives us some flexibility in those other areas, and then obviously, I know Roger has in there the note about potential future expansion as well. So, you know, from my perspective, in terms of operating a building at that level, it, it does address our needs and does seem to address what we might need, should we ever get above that, that particular number.
One, one more point I'd like to make is the, we kept the media center on the upper side square footage as well, because we felt that that's an area that's unique, it has so many different functions with the flex rooms and the maker space. And so we thought, we said, well, if the population were to expand up close to 700, like the cafeteria, that would have been another area that you'd want and appreciate the extra space. So, you'll note that that compares to what the 720 chart had for the Yonah space.
All right, Ms. Downey.
Okay, now, um, I gotta say, thanks, guys, for really answering questions and being so responsive so quickly, really, I appreciate it. I personally think that we as a board really kind of felt that 660 is kind of the right number to build to, which is about 100, which, when we were talking about that, we were looking at 115,000 square feet as kind of a base. And now we're talking about 117,000, we're about only about 2,000 or so square feet bigger, which is really just driven by the media center and the cafeteria, two spaces that we cannot change, once we build this building. Adding extra classrooms, we're talking about, but these are spaces that the entire student population uses, like the oversized auditorium that we have. You know, we could make an argument, let's make the auditorium smaller and make the cafeteria bigger. But I think we don't really want to get into that, but I think the point is, we want the common spaces to accommodate the size population that we think is likely to happen. I think 660 is well in line, other than right now, with the last 20 years of students at Central Middle School. In fact, it's a little low. So, I would suggest to my colleagues on the Board that this is worthy, we've put a lot of time and thought into this, and I think this is the right balance in terms of the number of classroom and the common spaces. And a couple of minor points, I, I know you mentioned also, we are going to have approval over the architect. Not, you didn't mention that Kathleen earlier. I would encourage all members of the Board who care about the design of the building to attend the Building Committee meeting, where the architects who are vying for the job make their presentations. Because we have opportunity, that if we don't like the architect, and we've seen the presentations of other architects, we can say, we didn't like the architect you hired, go back, we have that right to say that to the Building Committee. So I plan to do so, I urge my fellow Board members to do so. I think, I, I'm happy to hear that they can come back to us, because I agree with you Kathleen about the energy. Because I, I think we do want to have some goals, but there's cost benefit analysis, and, and fully understanding the nuances of the various energy. I think we also, now after just having this discussion at the high school, we have not mentioned landscaping. We've talked about site development, I don't know how to handle the landscaping, obviously, at this point. And maybe it means we have to come back and re-amend the ed specs at some point, once we have a better sense of where the building's going to be sited and the landscaping, because as you all know, planning and zoning put a lot of conditions on the vestibule on the landscaping. So for Laura on the Building Committee, and Tony, if you're, Turner, if you're listening, put that in your little, don't forget about it file. So anyway, to me, this seems like the right balance of size that everyone's comfortable with, that we're building an 80-year building, but that we've been reasonable in terms of not overbuilding it, and, but we've been thoughtful for the future. So, and with that, I turn it over.
Ms. Hirsch.
Well, I had a question that I had actually sent off to Dr. Jones earlier today, and I thought it might be beneficial to everybody to hear the answer to it. One of the changes from our prior ed specs to this one was a notation as to keeping the current school where it is while we look to build an additional site. You know, I just, having that in the current ed specs makes me just a little nervous. It's, it's the right idea, but without knowing, we haven't tested the soil, we don't really know what this building's going to look like. It makes it a little more difficult to put those kinds of requirements on to any architect, I think. I think it's certainly our intention to keep our kids in the current school for as long as we can, but that's just my thought. So I did ask, because we discussed making sure that the soil was being tested while the students were out of school. So Dr. Jones gave me that answer, and could you share that with, with the rest of the Board, and then I'll get to my next point?
Yeah, the, the last date from the company was the week of August 8th through 12th, and Dan is on of, there was a change today, and I didn't hear about it, he can chime in.
Good evening, yeah, that's, that's what we have the latest on. And I still have to get that information to Parks and Rec, should there be any other rentals on the field for the rest of the summer. But that's the latest date that we have from the engineering firm.
So if those are the dates that they're going to be going out and doing soil testing, when do you think we might get the, you know, how quick is the turnaround for that? Because I think that that kind of goes to some of the discussion that we're having here.
I'd give them a month, you know, there's several locations where they're doing borings, several other locations where they're doing test pits, they're testing for different things. I, I'd give them a month, that's a pretty, pretty decent turnaround.
Okay, thank you for that, and I just, you know, I, I know we, since, since we've been talking about an additional building that we've spec'd out, and we know right now the costs are really high, the timing is really long for things. You know, I, I think people have thoughts on costs for what we're going to be doing in their mind, and I think it's really premature for us to even consider that, you know, even hiring an estimator, because right now we're at a historic high for building construction costs, materials, and timing. So I, I just want to sort of caution those that are participatory in this discussion and beyond to be considerate of the fact that really this is, by the time we get to bidding this out, it's not, we probably won't be looking at that, those same kinds of figures as we are right now, so not to be scared off. You know, my, finally, I've spent a lot of time, I've put together countless spreadsheets and looking at the multiple different sizes and the options that we've been looked at, and I know we were sort of talking about making sure we include space, flex space going forward, if we do need to add classrooms. The difference between the initial 660 suggestions and this hybrid model, really, you know, 2,600 square feet, you know, it's really not so significantly different. And, and I think to be able to give that kind of flexibility is, is much smarter option. But again, I, I do find it difficult to, to kind of visualize where things are going until we really have an idea of what we can do on the site, without taking up space in, in other areas on the site, you know, fields and whatnot. So that's just my thought.
Thanks, Ms. Costin.
Sorry, I had trouble in muting. So I guess there's also a lot of questions that even still remain for me. You know, we have an amphitheater, you know, outdoor classroom space that, you know, is, is unknown in size. I don't know what we'll be able to get onto the site, the site itself at 22.3 acres is sizable. And I think any improvement to what we've currently got with a lot of overgrown vegetation along the outskirts of the field, and just a less than ideal use of space as it is, I think we're, we've got to be coming ahead, because right now, there's a lot of room for improvement. But I, I, it's hard to sort of visualize, you know, the project in its current form, and without even knowing where, where this building could be sited, yet.
So that could be one of the things, for example, in my motion, right? That you'd sort of say, you've done this, the work, that'd be one of the first things, you'd say, can you come back to us with that information? That's why I try to like make it as broad as possible, so then you'd say, that's a really important decision point. Now Laura, you're at the table, so you have more of a say than the rest of us. But I think that that's a point where, and that's why I try to add that condition, which I think gives us more flexibility than meets the eye. But I'm, again, I'm not a lawyer, but it's, you know, I might have had some work. All right, Ms. Kowalski.
So I just want to understand the hybrid version better and what's being proposed. So we're saying we're sticking with the six, excuse me, the 660. Sorry, the 660, and then we're making the media center and the cafeteria larger. Is that correct? Okay, and how much larger, and, and really what is, what I'm trying to understand is the justification for that. I mean, I've, I've spoken many times on the same thing. I, I was good at 660, I still think 660 is too big. You have a school now that's at, you know, 550 stu-, or sorry, what, what was this year, 5, 5?
42.
542, that's actually under what we had projected for this year. Next year, we're, it's projected to 511, and if I look over the next 10 years of what's projected, you know, we have a high of 498, and then it goes down from there, even at a low of 411. And when you're looking at a school that's already capable of 660, and in the current building, I think this is, this building would be 30% bigger than what the building that we currently have. And even that, at some point, was able to manage, you know, 700 students, while not ideal, but that number wasn't there for the longevity of, you know, for a host of a number of years. It spiked at one year and then went down after that. You know, I worry about building a school that's just too big, from, even from a component of building costs versus heating and cooling and maintaining, something that sits, partially sits empty. And then, you know, in addition to that, you, you're talking about, just from an environmental standpoint, you've got more steel, more concrete, for those that are worried about that aspect of it. I just think that you could get me at 660, although that was big enough, and I think satisfies more than enough needs for the next 80 years. But the additional add-ons, I just, again, I don't, I haven't heard a justification for them. And I've said, we can't look at this particular school in the vacuum with all of the other programs that we have, all the, all the other buildings that we need to, to, to do. And unless we're planning on redistricting and moving an entire elementary school into the school, I just, I, I'm can't justify the size, I, you know, it could be okay at 660, and I've been saying that forever. And even that was pushing my outer limits, so I, I struggle with even the add-on, and I know everyone's saying, it's just a little bit, it's just a little bit, but you know, you could keep saying that, it's like, well, it's just a little bit. Yeah, well, where do we stop with it, just a little bit? And, and again, I worry about getting the approval, because we haven't even talked about what it would cost to demo this, the current building, put in the fields, you're talking about an additional 10 million on top of that, and we're already running over what, you know, the BET has been signaling that they have for this project. And I, I really do think we need to work with them and the rest of the government within town to make sure we get this project done, done the right way. And I think 660, you can build a beautiful school and have all the right spaces, and get it through the rest of the layers of government, but I struggle to see how this one gets done.
Okay, Ms. Hirsch.
Sorry, I, you know, I had been looking through a lot of the historical enrollment data, and I, I've been kind of, I've been trying to go through a lot of that, I mean, if you just look at the past 20 years, for instance, you know, seven or eight of them, hold on, let me just pull up my, are at 650 or above. You know, and then you have two that are right around that, and then we're trending downward, which is a national trend. But the fact of the matter is, is, you know, if you talk to any of, anybody that's involved in, in finance, they'll start to tell you, we're starting to look towards, you know, a bit of a recession, right? There's going to be a bounce back, we've seen that happen here before in Greenwich, and what, what do people do? A lot of people start to enroll their kids more in public schools, it's, it's typically what happens, we've, we've seen it many a time before. You know, we've also been trending, you know, we're, we're sort of at the low of that, you know, wave of enrollments, you know, and I looked back from years and years past, we had over 10,000 students enrolled K-12 here in the 1970s, right? And so it's, it's trended slightly downward and back up to around, well, I think it was actually close to 12,000, I can't find the number in front of me, but you know, and, and we mostly stuck around 9,000, but it's sort of, it's waved. So this year, we're lower, we're going down a little bit, but I, I think 660 may still be a little bit small, but I'd be willing to stick with it. I, I think if you look towards anything below that, we're going to create a situation where we're going to overcrowd before we even put a shovel on the ground, and that's my, my biggest concern. This isn't going to be having a shovel on the ground for another, another couple of years, and, and, you know, we know all, you know, automatically, these things tend to go up. I mean, I can, I can get you more historical data, I've been compiling it for a while, so.
I understand that, but Karen, in direct response to that, and I'm sorry, I'm a little out of turn, but we were thinking of that with respect to New Lebanon, and we haven't seen that happen there either. So the numbers are, are down there, and they haven't come back up, and we thought, you know, build a beautiful big school, and that's still 100 seats empty.
And Ms. Costin.
I was about to do the incremental square footage changes from 5,080, where we were, to 4,900 in the, in the student dining area. So, you know, I, I, these are very, very small incremental numbers with regard to the media center and, and the dining. But I would also just remind ourselves that you can't ignore what's happening right on Millbank Road, where they just bulldozed a bunch of homes to make way for 30 units at least, right in, in JC's, you know, backyard essentially. So, you know, and it's not the only development that's going to be going up in the central catchment area. You know, 30 units is, is a lot in just one place, and it's, it's just not the only one, so I just wanted to put that out there.
All right, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, I'm sorry, but here it comes. The, I have a lot of points, and hopefully I, you understand my points, and not asking anyone to agree or disagree with them, but I feel the need to make them. We have to give 100%. We have to give one hundred percent this building committee guidance on how this building is look, how this building will look and what we expect from them. We can't ask them to just randomly build a building or design a building and have them turn around and ask us for approval, and us just say, after all their work and all their efforts, say, nah, I don't like that, uh, something else, please, and send them back. We have to work to give them guidance on what we expect. This is a board of ed building. We are the board of ed, and we are going, or should be creating some door, some sort of renderings, rough renderings. We don't have to spend a lot of money, but just give them some sort of idea of what we're looking for. Here's what will happen. They will come back with what we aspire for, what we hope for, and we will be happy. They will come back with something we don't like, and we'll tell them we don't like it, and it'll start creating animosity between us and the building committee. Or they will come back with something that's even better and exceeds our expectations, and we'll be happy. So two of the three options might take place, but I'm not prepared uh to have that third option, which, or the first option, which creates the animosity between the Board of Education and the Building Committee. I spoke to Tom Hagney, who uh is a land use attorney, a friend, worked with us on the uh, on the Greenwich Stadium project, the Cardinal Stadium project, uh, and got to know him quite well. I called him, uh, Tom Hagney. You talked about experience on building committees. Tom has served on nine building committees in Greenwich. Five of them, he chaired. He said that once the Board of Education agrees on the ed specs, and in the past, we've been agreeing on ed specs and renderings, but in the past, we would hand over to the building committee, uh, the, our ed specs and our renderings, and then it would be theirs to operate. They take ownership, they take control, they're professionals. They are, uh, they're volunteers, and they don't want to hear of them from us second guessing them. We put a lot of stipulations in place. It'll just delay the process even further, creating a degree of animosity. Site plan, next topic, site plan. We need to know going into this thing, whether we're going to keep our central middle school opened as present or and build on a different footprint, or build on the same footprint. We need to know that before we hand this off to the building committee. There's a lot of planning and stuff and preparations we have to make if we're shutting down Central Middle School because we're using the same footprint. These are things we don't know at this point. We need to know prior to passing it off to the next group. These are important issues. We have to agree, and I'm stealing this uh from uh from Mike. Mike had called me earlier, and we talked about the significance of this project. This is a fifty-year project. This is the biggest thing the Board of Education has done or will do since fifty years ago, building the high school. We have to be in agreement. We have to be eight oh on on these issues. We need to talk them out. We can't have Roger had mentioned the change he made today. Well, thank you for doing the work, and I appreciate you making sure you you change things, but that was today. We can't be making decisions on the, at the last minute, when we only get information several hours ago for such a a project uh of this scale. This is a fifty-year project. This is the biggest project any of us will approve on this board, a board before us for many years, and possibly the board going forward. That's truly important. And uh, I think we need to make sure that when we have these renderings, we put them out to the newspapers, to the public, because you know what? Once we design, once we pick the the look of the building, not necessarily a specific design, but once we have the look of the building that we're looking for, and we put that out to the public and the newspapers, one of the things, another problem I have is we're hearing nothing from the public because we've invited them, but they're not motivated to come and talk to us. Once on the front page of the newspaper, we put, this is what the Board of Ed has in mind uh as far as building Central Middle School. We will have the supporters and those against uh lining up uh outside our meeting at Central, at Central Middle School for the meeting that we advertised that we're going to have. And then we'll hear lots of public opinion. And from that public opinion, we can feel comfortable about going forward. We, as a board, have to agree on all these issues before we approve. There are many things we're still debating that we're not in agreement. We have to be in agreement. We have to carry that agreement forward and make sure we're still in agreement with with a little time going forward. There's a lot of stuff we have to do before we pass this off. Well, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. And I know you've continued to be concerned on that. I was hoping my motion would help, but I know it's not perfect for you. One of the things that it makes me think about, though, is that, under my motion, one of the first things I'd also request beyond the energy thing is that the architect, which of course can't be hired until the building committee has our ed specs to then hire the architect. So it's a little bit like a chicken and egg thing, right? One of the first things I'd sort of say is the board would like to see your designs, right? So that would be the first thing I'd sort of say, well, as a board, we'd have to vote on that. But to me, that would make some sense. So, anyway, I hear you. Um, I think that we're trying to balance the needs of recognizing that the fix to Central Middle School, as sad as it is that they're doing the summer, only is five years. Um, and if we don't get going, we actually could be bumping up against that, and that's also another fear of mine. Um, Michael Joseph.
Yeah, thanks. They, um, so let me, I have a question and a comment. The, and I'm sorry, I'm on my phone. My internet worked yesterday. I don't know why. So the, um, if I understand, on the cafeteria side, we, um, the cafeteria is sized for about seven hundred and five students, I guess. Is that what kind of what we're thinking? The, um, it's two hundred and thirty-five students, sized for two hundred and thirty-five students times three, right? They, um, so above the six sixties, is that right?
Roughly correct, yeah.
And so, which is how, that's fifteen kids, right? The, um, above the the six sixty, where we're adding fifteen, it's just to be because six sixty divided by three is two twenty, right? So we're talking about another fif-, uh, space for fifteen students, the, um, right?
Roughly, yeah, yeah.
And what's the square footage, the difference roughly, are we talking about here?
So I'm not sure what difference to what. It's forty-nine hundred now, I believe.
And what would be a, what would the, so what are we talking about? So to make room for that extra fifteen students. What's the change in the, like, do we have a rough idea what a six sixty cafeteria would be?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be about maybe for two twenty. Better with the cap, because I think it's twenty-one square feet per student, so fifteen would be at about, was that three hundred square feet difference?
Three hundred square feet?
Roughly, if I do my math right.
And is that, um, and, um, do we think it's similar to that in the, um, in the media center?
Yeah, I, yeah, I I do too. It doesn't work quite the same way for the media center because cafeteria has basically one use, you're feeding students there. But the media center has a multitude of uses. And so when you increase the student body by forty or fifty students, it's it's going to impact different elements of the media center. So uh, both flex spaces may be occupied. Now they have to use the maker space for something else. Uh, or they uh have to use a portion of the of the library proceeding so that they can conduct some sort of a special meeting. So we just gave them additional space because those are the areas that will feel it if you do increase your student body up to that roughly seven hundred level.
I I I hear you, and it makes sense. The, um, I guess the, I guess the the question is, is it, is it, was it, is it, is it is it worth the, um, we're not talking about a whole lot of square footage here. Mr. Haley, how, um, do you have any sense of, but I appreciate the numbers. Mr. Haley, do you have any sense the, um, how many students we had in the cafeteria when we were above seven hundred? Were you doing one lunch a grade, or did you have to split things up?
So when I, uh, took on the role as principal, we were already around those mid-sixes. And basically, it was at that point where we were able to go from what I believe was either four or five lunch waves to three grade level lunch waves. So as soon as I came in, we were at a size where I could actually get three lunch waves going. Um, and this uh may sort of actually address what Ms. Kowalski brought up earlier, just about a justification, like speaking to the cafeteria, that's really where the larger cafeteria helps you, because the moment you bump up to the point where you can't fit in, you know, the the lunches through in three waves, that's where you're dealing with an impact on your overall schedule. So whether that's lunches, you know, uh, happening earlier in the day, later in the day, shortening instructional time or things like that to fit all the kids through, mixing grade levels. I believe the way they did it before I got there, to your point, um, Dr. McCant Anthony was was that there was a, there were three seventh eighth or two seventh eighth lunches, I think it was three seventh eighth lunches and a sixth grade lunch. So they wanted to keep the sixth graders together, but then they mixed up the seventh and eighth graders and did it by subject. So that was happening when the building was a bit larger, um, based on the cafeteria size we have now. So having a larger cafeteria size to prepare for that does allow us to keep in line with the programmatic goals of the middle school and, you know, keeping the kids together, grade level lunches and and creating that space. Right now, going into next year, even at the size that we are, my first lunch happens and has been happening since I've been there about ten thirty in the morning with my last lunch ending around one or one-ten. So any additional lunch you're adding in there could bump those out or change the way you have to put together your instructional model.
Okay. All right, I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate all that. Um, I, let me just echo, um, Joe's point about the the significance of this. Um, I I I share his sense of being uncomfortable and that. I'm the nature of the beast here. We're getting information today and things like that. This is no question, the largest, um, project the Board of Ed has faced in in fifty years. You know, we're talking, you know, easily sixty, seventy, eighty million dollars. You know, it's it's, um, we have to do this right. And even though, um, we have a five-year, we, there are other urgencies and things like that, if if I think it behooves us, and I've made this point to a number of board members, I really do think it behooves us to be able to say, as the eight of us, that all of us can stand firmly behind, um, these ed specs. This is not a minor project. And we know that this project's got to go through many, many other hoops um, effort gets 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 after where we we put our imprimatur on it. And I think we have to be comfortable with it in order to be able to, and I think our our due diligence as a board of ed has to be to try to reach common ground. And if we're really talking about the, um, we've, we've come a long way over the last few months, right? The, um, that sounds, I'm hearing consensus around the six sixty number. It sounds like, you know, from hearing from different board members just right now, there's this dispute over three hundred square feet. They, um, maybe, maybe that means we have to talk about this a little bit more, and we're not ready for a vote. Because I do think we need, we we need to be, we need to be squarely all behind this, and if we're just getting information today, maybe we need to wait, wait, wait another month in order to do our due diligence and figure this out. That's it for me.
All right, Ms. Downey.
Okay, Michael Joseph, we do not have a month. So let me just be very clear. The building committee cannot start its work until we vote, so. We all agree, okay, we all agree this is an important project. We talk about other important projects. We had Nisa, we had Glenville, we had New Lebanon. We have important projects. This is another important project, but it's not the only important project we've done in the last X number of years. I'm going to just stress a couple of points that I think need to be corrected. We do say in the ed specs, Joe, that we expect to use a different footprint of where the existing building is. It's in there. Um, and say we expect to continue using the building. The the information everyone got today, we talked about new information, it was merely a math error on the number of classrooms. It was not a major point. And to the point about, you know, design and ed specs, when New Lebanon feasibility was done, there was a rendering. And the rendering was done by one architect, and the the building committee and the board were told, don't fall in love with how this looks, because when the building committee hires an architect to do the project, they can hire a new architect, and it can look completely different. And they both hired a new architect, and I believe it did look completely different. I I agree with Karen Kowalski, we're doing it the right way. To me, we're doing it the right way. We all agree on six sixty. Going through nits of, you know, caf-, I think we're 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 down to the nits. This is the time. We have to vote. And I think the notion of asking for an eight-zero vote, I I I think is unreal, unrealistic. I think we all are different people, we're coming at different points of views. We're not going to have an eight-oh vote on any point of this. That's not how the process works, doesn't require unanimity. And my point is, I say we call the question.
Okay, all right, so, um, why not? Okay, so you called the question, so I can't stop that.
You can, you can continue. I I I want to say something. That's okay. I haven't been on the Board of Education now for coming up, what are we, on two and three-quarter year or something like that? I have not missed a single meeting. Uh, and, uh, was there something said that I might have been paying attention to something else that gave us uh, this mandatory deadline that we had to do something uh at this pace, or else? I have not been informed what this this false deadline is or this deadline. Uh, maybe someone could explain that something is going to happen, uh, that, uh, that I'm not aware of if we don't decide immediately on this project.
No, I mean, it just, everything takes a long time. As you, I mean, like, think about how much the, uh, like, we're talking about the high school today, right? I mean, that started a few years ago, right? So, you know, Joe, when you and I decided to do something at our home, and you know, we do it, right? Um, with building committees and planning and zoning and all the things we're going to go through, um, the longer we take, the fact is, you know, we need to build a new building. There's, there is a, a five years, right, that this building is good for. And every day, we're, we're going to hit, you know, bumps in the road for sure. And also, we're going to have to keep investing in this building. I think a big part of the original building, too, is capital avoidance, right? And, you know, the longer it goes on, the more we're going to have to sort of, it's a sum cost. I I hear you. I want to be, Ms. Downey.
The building committee can't do anything until we show them ed specs. They can't, they have nothing they can do in a productive fashion without a set of ed specs. They cannot put out an RFP to hire an architect. They can't do anything. They, the, there will be no progress.
Well, I appreciate that. I I appreciate the fact the building committee is waiting, but I think we have addressed that in our last topic, that the building committee, uh, in the nature of the beast, the volunteers are of the volunteers. And there's no reason we should rush our decision based on a building committee that's waiting for us. Uh, we have to make sure we are a hundred percent sure of this project, uh, before we move forward. I would like renderings, and and I would like, uh, I would like a site plan, and I would like that prior to, uh, to, uh, agreeing on on ed specs. I I believe I spoke to Laura, our liaison, uh, earlier today. She also wants those, and I'm trying to figure out how to, uh, add to the motion or make a separate motion, uh, if we disapprove this, uh, or don't approve the ed specs to add scope. And I know there are some people who want to know the cost of that. I appreciate that, too. I don't want very costly renderings, but I do want to hand something off, uh, something we believe as a group, hopefully eight-zero, and I think that is really important in the scale of this project to be in agreement. So I would like to know that, not ask, well, maybe we'd like to know if, uh, if if you can tell us whether we're going to be replacing the building on the same footprint, or possibly putting on a different footprint. I would like to know that prior to passing this off to the next group.
Okay, uh, Ms. Costin.
Sorry, I was muted. I know we've called a question. Um, I do have an associated motion after we concluded the ed specs. You're muted. Kathleen, you're muted.
Sorry, there's a motion on the table, but I'm happy to amend my motion, because I think I hear what you're trying to say. So, hold on. Give me a moment. Um, okay, approve the CMS ed specs. So I'm withdrawing my motion, sorry. Putting forth a new motion. Um, approve the CMS ed specs as presented with the following condition, that the chair of the building committee provides an update at certain points as requested by the board. For example, um, the architect providing design ideas.
No, no, Kathleen, we already get to approve the design on the architect. I think you're, you're making this more con-, complicated.
I admit.
They can, the board, the building committee does not hire an architect without board approval. As part of that process, the architect is going to have to present to us, and we have to be. As part of that process, the architect is going to have to present to us and we have to be happy with that selection. I, I don't know how much clearer we can be about.
I know, but it's like they're not hearing.
We're not hearing, I think it's ridiculous. Architect to design something we want unless we tell that architect what we want. We can't randomly say, design a building and hope you please us.
How about if we have them come back?
This is not how the process has ever worked before, just to be clear.
This is the process we've changed. This is the change in the process. It's always been, we come with some renderings, we hand those off to the building committee, they hire their architect, they look at the renderings, that bound to them. But we have approval of their design. And if they look like our design or are better than our design, it's easy to say yes. If they are not like our art design or we don't like them, we've got to explain why we're saying no unless we
We don't have to explain why we're saying no, we just say no.
Okay, so, I want to find a way forward. You know what? The only person who hasn't spoken and it's very late is Mr. Kendall, so I'm going to let him talk.
Just had a question. I know we covered what the size difference was for cafeteria. What was the, the size difference like from a normal six sixty to a hybrid six sixty? In square footage, does Roger have a rough sense of that? Or I was trying to find that, that if we had a, I don't think we did a draft ed specs of just six sixty. Does anyone know the answer to that?
We did a, we did a chart, hang on, let me dig that up.
I have it handed.
It's twelve hundred square feet. That was the difference from what you put forward for six sixty in this.
Wait, for, for which category, Cody?
For the cafeteria, you said, right?
It, it, it was twelve hundred from, from the five eleven number.
Yeah, so what, what I have is everything combined. So what happened basically was that the cafeteria at the five eleven was four thousand three hundred and eighty. And then when we went to six sixty, it was four thousand six fifty seven. And then now it's, I think, forty nine can all, all in. Even though we stayed at six sixty, we still bumped it up around three hundred square feet because as you remember, we did, we did the math for the additional students per wave.
So that's the media center or the cafeteria?
Cafeteria. Did you ask media center?
Yeah, yeah, media.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought they said cafeteria. So media center, yeah, was at three five ninety or for at the five eleven. It went to the high, I don't recall what our original was. I, I think what happened when we went to the six sixty, we increased the, the media center jumped significantly at that point because we made the stacks area larger and we also introduced additional flex, flex classroom. And it, and ironically, that stayed the same even when we went to the seven twenty. But it jumped again when we looked at the seven eighty to six nine ninety.
Well, just looking, you guys had said for five, for five eleven, it was thirty five ninety. At six sixty, your suggestion was sixty one ninety. And now at the hybrid, it's fifty three eighty. So it went down eight hundred square feet.
Okay, yeah, and that's because I think we, we removed one of the flex spaces.
Right, well, I, you know, we didn't have a spec out for six sixty. So, I mean, it's negligible, it's four hundred square feet difference. If you would talk about the reduction in size from there suggested for media center and the increase for the cafeteria, so.
Yeah, what I was going to suggest, which doesn't seem necessary anymore, but I'll just say it was perhaps, because the cafeteria seems like it's probably lower marginal cost per square foot and also seems to be a bottleneck from a size standpoint. That we would take the hybrid cafeteria and go back to the old six sixty media center, but if we've actually shrunk the media center, then I'm, you know, I think Mike pointed out, we're talking about small differences at this point, but that seems reasonable to me.
And Cody, I know you're, it's impressive that you're doing this math at this hour. So, all right, Ms. Hirsch, I believe, and then Ms. Kowalski.
The only question I have is for your motion, since that's what we were talking about, my question would be simply if we approve this, if something comes back with the soil, is it something we can put, you know, in, into the motion to then address something? That, that's my only concern because we are approving ed specs that specifically stipulate that we are putting it on a slightly different spot on the site. And if there is a if that does affect things, we should be having that within, you know, a month or so.
That's fair. And you know, by that time, again, they just need this. And I mean, I think we're there, but also I think that it's important for the building committee to start the RFP process with the architect. But you're right, if something changed, we'd have enough time to then modify it, compromise something.
Because you're, I mean, you, yeah, I mean, that, that would be the only thing, because just you're adjusting something slightly if you need to. Or if we note that instead of whatever footprint, it has to have seconds, whatever it is to fit into a certain spot, that, that would be my only thought. To add to the, to the
To that motion. Okay, I'll do that. Let me just ask, let me keep going here. Ms. Kowalski.
So I think this question is for Roger. The six sixty total square foot, just looking at that, was a hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty eight. Sorry, a hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty eight square feet. What is it now in this hybrid component? So are we literally adding three hun- just three hundred square feet? So we're at
No, we're one seventeen. Or I don't have that in front of me, but we're one seventeen and change. So we, because of the increase to the cafeteria, the increase to the media center. And then what happens, there's a corresponding increase to the circulation space because you have more, more students. You're going to need more corridor space, more lobby, more, more of that supportive space. You had to add to that as well. So it's an increase of approximately three thousand square feet.
So, but I thought the media space went down from sixty one ninety to fifty three eighty.
Yeah, I I'd have to dig back into the rationales. All I have are numbers in front of me. I don't, I don't
I appreciate that. I mean, because, you know, everyone seems to suggest that we're arguing over three hundred square feet. And I appreciate the three hundred square feet and I can get behind, if you're just going to add to the cafeteria, three hundred square feet in the media site center, which I don't think needs to be increased at all, did decrease, that's great. But we're at a hundred and seventeen, which adds an additional three thousand square feet and change because of other factors because of that. And that's what I, you know. Three thousand square feet is three thousand square feet.
It's actually twenty six sixty two. The difference between what was in the chart originally and what it is in today's ed specs.
And that twenty six sixty two is simply because you have to add additional corridor space because you're adding three hundred square feet to the cafeteria.
That's part.
What's the other part?
Well, there's, there's the actual program space increases to the media center, increases to the cafeteria.
That's where, yeah, sorry, Roger, that's where you lose me. Because if the media center decreased in space from the six sixty, which was at sixty one ninety down to fifty three eighty. Yeah, that, that's a difference of eight hundred square feet. So that's why I don't understand if you're increasing both, we're not increasing the media, we're actually reducing it, which is in the right direction.
The way I, the math, as I see it, Karen, just to help you out. We have, for some reason, four hundred square feet of classroom space. Cause instead of thirty two, three thirty, it's thirty two, seven thirty. So there's four hundred square feet there. There's twelve hundred in the caf- but it's, see, it's hard what we're comparing it to. We're comparing it to the forty six fifty seven. So then there's a thousand twenty three, so you're at fourteen twenty three. Then there's a one hundred more in the art room. So now what do you have fifteen twenty three? There's one hundred, no, is it one hundred more? The career center, no, that's the same. And then there's some, that excess space. I mean, I'm kind of
It's more than just adding to the cafeteria. We're adding a hundred square, first square feet. And we're, we're adding four hundred square feet in classroom size, we're adding a hundred square feet in art room size. So it's not just the cafeteria.
But we're also reducing the media center by eight hundred square feet. Everything else is exactly the same.
No, that's not what we just said.
And then the art went from eighteen hundred to nineteen hundred.
Yes, that was a hundred square feet there, twelve hundred to the, to cafeteria. Four hundred in classroom and reduction of eight hundred to media.
But then there's this, and the ancillary building services core circulation.
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess they don't understand why core circulation has to increase when you're just making
It was explained to me that it's a percentage of the
It's just a percentage. They basically try to keep that, that percentage should be approximately thirty to thirty five percent of the overall space. And if so, as soon as you start increasing program area, you have to adjust your circulation space somewhat. So we just try to keep to that same percentage if possible. Because architects, when they, when they come in, they're going to be looking, not just at the program, but they have to see they have to size the corridors, they have to be ten feet wide, they have stairwells, they have lobbies, they have all sorts of things that they have to try and figure out how much room they have to work with. So we, we can't cut them short on that space because code requires a certain amount of area for those functions.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, did you, you had your hand up at one point. Did you need to talk or? Nope, okay. Michael Joseph, but then I have a revised motion, so go ahead, but I'm ready to put forth a revised.
All right, because, so, so I, I thought we were I thought we were heading in a good spot and now I'm concerned because I, I, I thought the conversation was around a building design for six sixty. And then we just added space to the cafeteria and media center. But, but now there's a lot of other numbers. Do we know what we're voting on here? Where there's twenty six hundred square feet difference is, 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 is there's art room space? There's this hallway space, this classroom space, I'm, now I'm confused.
Well, we kept hearing from different folks, board members, as well as staff and administration that they felt the media center was too small on the early, in the early renditions of the ed specs. So the stacks area, because of the, the books going from possibly ten to fifteen thousand, we increased the stacks area by five hundred square feet. So that was one of the things that accounted for the increased media center. So, the other thing was when we had two art, at the seven twenty, I think we had two art rooms. Now at six sixty, we go back to one art room. But we felt that, you know, because it was only one art room, it probably a good idea if we could just give them a little bit more space to work with. So we increased them by a hundred, a hundred square feet. The cafeteria, based on what you folks said to us, you, you were concerned that the population may go up to seven hundred. So just, that's just a, a function of how many kids are in a, in a, in a lunchway. So that's why we increased the cafeteria that size. So those, those areas, the really assembly areas and areas where large groups of people may gather were the areas that we looked at and said, if we're going to go to seven hundred, these are the areas that would probably have the impact. Cause Tom and Fran came back and said they thought they could basically add enough classrooms, enough science rooms and all the other program areas to accommodate the six sixty and even up to the seven hundred in the, in those academic areas. So the focus was really on media, cafeteria, little bit of art room, and then the accompanying circulation space. The core, the core circulation space corridors always. And quite frankly, you know, this is the, like, the fifth version. So I'm getting a little rattled in my head trying to keep track of which numbers were which one. I'd have to make up a new chart and kind of put it all in front of me so that I could explain it better. But off, off the top of my head, I'm not, I'm not pulling them out quick enough. I apologize.
No, no, I, I understand. I appreciate it.
So I'm going to say one thing and I'm going to put forth a new motion. I, I spent a lot of time looking at this and I know Ms. Downey, that's why she, she spent, she made a whole crazy analysis. And so this has all been in there. I know we've changed a lot back and forth and we've been thank you for getting us here. I think at one point we were, there were many of us in the seven twenty camp. I think six sixty addresses the needs for today and with the ability with the, with the performing arts center, media and cafeteria as it is, I think that in, you know, fifty years or so, or maybe sooner, when this building is well over seven hundred, we will have you know, met their needs. But since I'm going to lose Cody soon, here is my revised motion.
Sorry, you have to withdraw.
I'm sorry, I'm withdrawing my motion. Putting forth a new motion, which, which addresses one other issue. To approve the CMS ed specs as presented, subject to satisfactory soil testing. With the following condition that the Chair of the Building Committee provides an updated certain points as requested by the Board. Do I have a second?
I'll give you a second.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call. I am obviously a yes on my own motion. Ms. Downey? Ms. Costin?
Yes.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Cody?
Uh, no.
Okay, Ms. Kowalski?
No.
Michael Joseph?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
Well, I'm in favor of this project. I have some requests that you know what? I just don't think we're ready. I'm sorry. No.
Okay, all right. So that doesn't pass. So we will, I don't know, come back at some point. Okay, so I am now going to go to Saint Rocks. I'm putting forth a motion to provide use of the Hamilton Avenue Field for Saint Rock's Carnival and Feast for August tenth through August thirteen, twenty twenty two, under certain conditions, which include, but are not limited to appropriate insurance as provided by the town risk manager and other standard town requirements. Additionally, in order to address the two thousand nine memo on file an independent engineer to assess the requirements of continuous use of the fields for heavy equipment. So the file could be amended for the long term if appropriate. Does anybody want to second that? Mr. Kelly? I'll just say my piece on this, I'm, I'm seeking to address this request from a community group that's important while ensuring the needs of our students are met and the interests of our taxpayers are protected. So hopefully this finds a balance for today, but also for the long term, because the memo will be an issue in future years, which is why I added the second part to see if an independent analysis could be done. I see hands up, although I feel like I should turn this to Joe because he's done the most work on this project. So I am going to do that before giving it to others, so.
Well, thank you for that. This, I've been working with the Saint Rocks community and the neighboring community to the Hamilton Avenue Field now for about five months. I do apologize to the Board. This is an issue I didn't think would rise to the Board level. I tried my best to work with the church and settle on some conflicts within the within groups that might disapprove. I tried to work with our own team as far as our experts. And I try to understand how we can protect the field while still granting the community the ability to, to use the field for this, for this feast that has been going on now for many, many years, I believe, over ninety years. There's a lot of, I know, growing up in Queens, New York, we don't have a lot of places that are not paved over. We might not appreciate that so much in some sections of Greenwich, where we have wonderful parklands that our town has put aside. But there are sections of our town that don't have the same advantages of, of having parks very local. A park, a small patch of grass, to me, growing up, was more important than anyone who did not grow up in the inner city could understand. So when the community reached out and, and I, I, I got into the discussion on, on, trying to help this happen, we ran into some issues. We discussed things. Hopefully we can, we can agree on this and move forward. I'd really like the, the feast to be on, on the field. I would also like to protect the field. So I, I think this motion helps us allow the the community to use the field and has us maybe having some degree of oversight. So we can mitigate any damage that might happen. And also, the, the town, the, the group itself is very encouraged to make sure that they leave it in a better state than they found it. Cause they know if they don't, then we will rethink about giving them the opportunity going forward. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Kowalski, and then Ms. Hirsch.
Um, I'm sorry, Kathleen, I don't understand your motion. Um, what is it? What are the so what are the conditions? Like, I I I didn't follow it.
Um, that whatever the town risk manager, I mean, there's general, there's insurance, right, that the town has to issue. Or that has to be provided, that goes in any.
Right. So the condition is that they have to have insurance?
Right, and the town risk manager comes up with that appropriate amount.
Okay. And then uh the study portion threw me. What's, they have to get a study done?
That's over time. But so the issue is, is that in fifty years, there will always be this memo on file unless you have some sort of analysis of some sort that disputes it, amends it, or does something along those lines. So that's not for now, but for the long term, you don't need, it doesn't need to be a study, and maybe it just needs to be an expert, which is why I didn't say a study. I said an independent engineer needs to assess the situation.
Didn't that already happen? I mean, we have an independent engineer that came out and put his stamp of approval and his company on the line to say
Was not, it was not commissioned by us. So that it it needs to be someone that's actually hired by us, and it needs to be an independent outsider. That was not something we paid for or hired.
I understood, but I mean, there still can be, I mean, with respect to that um, that opinion, that still holds accountability and liability on their part by having put forth an opinion for which they realized they were doing it and that there would be reliance on that opinion in moving forward. So I'm not sure why we would spend additional money on
Any other, we, there is something in this file that can't be removed without an amendment of some sort, and there's is not going to override that. But I'm gonna let other people keep talking and um and then I can explain that further. Go ahead.
So just to be clear, though, on the motion, the motion is that the church, Saint Rock, can go forward this year and have their uh with appropriate assurance, in church, with appropriate insurance, they can go forward with their festival on Hamilton Avenue Fields.
With, as long as they have, they have appropriate insurance, I said, and other standard town requirements, just because I have no idea what those are, but I imagine there are some.
Which I I just think that leaves open a huge ambiguity um, that could be interpreted a million ways, but and it cuts may cut against it. But a lot of others have asked questions.
Ms. Hirsch?
Sorry, uh, trying to find my mute button. Um, I, you know, I I'm kind of along the lines in some regards with Karen. I think there's a lot of ambiguity here. Um, you know, to use our fields, we are all, we already require ins- insurance, they have to submit a site plan, which gets, which is approved to not just by, you know, by the town, it's approved by the fire marshal. I've never seen a site plan, uh, to my knowledge, one hasn't actually been submitted for this. So it's really hard for me to make any kind of determination uh as to the use of the field if we don't know how they're planning to use it. We've not heard any discussion on that. Um, that's point one. You know, our our first and foremost responsibility is to our school and our students. Um, and secondarily, uh, also to all of our community members, and I'd like to be able to find a way forward uh for all parties involved. I know, you know, Saint Rocks has used the field uh in years prior, but it had, they haven't used the field for thirteen years. You know, if they told me they wanted to put pony rides on the field uh and let kids play soccer, all well and good, if they're telling us that they want to put in a pool and a bouncy house and a who knows what, I, you know. So the use would be the reason that I I'm not really sure. Um, so again, I I think there's a lot of ambiguity here. Um. And I would agree, I think we do need an independent uh somebody to come and take a look. Um, to my knowledge, no one has actually shown up and and looked at that field and provided us with uh documentation. Work has been done on that field since those geothermal wells have gone in. I personally called and spoke to people, but nobody has been willing to go on record uh with a letter. Um, just having a letter from a community member uh saying, well, this is the discussion I had is the same as me saying I've had a discussion with those individuals. To me, I think it's exceptionally important that we have something, someone come take a look. You know, we have competed, you know, differing opinions and information, and it's really hard to go forward with ambiguity in that regards. Uh, the third point of this is, you know, I'm on the policy committee, our policy does stipulate that we uh allow for um you you know, so no means no uh typically, but you know, Saint Rocks didn't ask, didn't push the no, they asked a why um, when they first started this discussion this year. Um, I'd like to be able to give them a a proper answer to to why going forward. Uh, and if we can remove that letter and replace it and allow use of that field for our school, for our PTAs, for our community members in this way, I think that would be fantastic. Um, but I'd like some uh, you know, so I don't know what the word is I'm looking for, but I I'd like some somebody to go on record. Um, I think more importantly, you know, we do have an appeals in our policy, it notes that, you know, somebody can appeal the question, they they go to the super, then they come to us, but that appeals process really is not uh uh discussed anywhere. And I think as a, I'd like to bring this as an aside note uh to the members of the policy committee for a discussion point. Um, I think we need to discuss either regulations or something to go into policy as to what goes forward when we do have an appeal on something like this. We've never had them before uh that I'm aware of. Um, but I think that that sort of key is, we don't have a site plan, we have no idea how they want to actually use this field. And so uh until I really have an understanding of that, I it's very hard forward. I'd be fine with certain use, not with others. And I think if they could wait a year so that we can give them that, uh, I think we'd be in a better place.
Michael Joseph?
Yeah, so so Kathleen, thank you. Um, because um, as board president, um, I it's worth pointing out that you really um have taken a lot of, even though Joe's run point on this, you you've been, you've been really working behind the scenes on this, and I and I appreciate this. Obviously, this is a lot of value to the community. I think we got something close to five hundred emails on this. The um less than ten um were opposed, and and most of those were um um, um, arguments about church and state that are misinterpreting that 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 concept. Um. Could you, would you mind reading the motion again?
Sure, although my motions aren't going well tonight. Um. Provide use of Hamilton Avenue Field for Saint Rocks Carnival and Feast for August tenth through August thirteen, twenty twenty-two under certain conditions, which include but are not limited to appropriate insurance as provided by the town risk manager and other standard town requirements. Additionally, in order to address the two thousand nine memo on file, an independent engineer to assess the requirements of continuous use of the fields for heavy equipment, so the file could be amended for the long term if appropriate.
Okay, so to make sure we're we're clear here, the um um, make sure I understand it right, it's it's a two, kind of like a two-part amendment in that uh, short term, this amendment saying Saint Rocks, tell me if I'm wrong here. This amendment saying Saint Rocks can can use the field for the carnival uh pending insurance and other things, which are all in keeping with, I think, our current policy anyway. Um, um, and then in the long term, um, let's um get to the bottom of this weird two thousand nine memo with our with our own folks. Is that is that is that a fair fair interpretation of the memo?
That is.
Do and this is not meant to be a loaded question. Um, do we need the 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 insurance? Um, those are those qualifiers, if those are already in our policy? Um, is there, is there, what was the thing behind stipulating that if that's already part of the approval process?
I just think it's important because there's been some obvious confusion around the process here that we just make sure that we follow the process, and I think especially around insurance, because that is going to protect our asset that it's weighed on, you know, that the risk manager weighs in, of course, she would. But I think it's important that we uh make sure that that's at its peak, right? And that that's not missed along the way.
Okay, okay. They, um, thanks, I appreciate, I I I appreciate that.
Okay, Ms. Kowalski?
No, I think um I think it's important to to remind her that it wasn't a random engineering firm that just wore it, some individual, it was the actual engineering firm that the town of Greenwich contracted through its contractor to actually build the geothermal wells themselves. And I think that that's, it's not a random person or a random company or a random town resident. It was the actual engineering company that was used by the town to build the wells in the first place.
Yes, but they didn't issue a a letter that they wouldn't go on record.
They issued a letter. The letter is there, and Kathleen, there's an email that Kathleen had said that that letter should replace that the um two thousand nine letter in the file, and she asked Fred to do that.
That was a little bit taken out of context, but I think the key here is what I'm trying to say is that there's competing opinions, and it would be prudent for us to make sure that now the file is clean so that there's no confusion going forward. And so to hire an independent or whatever, to have the public schools actually contract a third party to opine on amending the memo, removing the memo, whatever it is, we need some sort of action to do that. Um, Ms. Costin?
I think there's some clarification needed on the letter that we got. The firm did not in that letter that was requested by the church, did not say we were the firm that put it in. Here's all the things the field can do. You know, we have visited the site since it was, you know, resurfaced at a cost of five hundred thousand dollars to the town. So I think um there's some ambiguity in that letter. They did not say we were the ones who did it. They did not say, you know, we visited the site. They just said they examined some documents, and I think that's where the the analysis fell short for some of us.
Uh, Cody?
Um, yeah, I apologize. It's three AM where I am, so I'm a little slow, but uh it's worth pointing out, I think a big difference between the private sector and government is you know, uh, private sector actually can't ever have a hundred percent certainty around everything, but they take calculated risks, and the insurance company on this, I believe the quote for providing a million dollars of insurance specifically related to the geothermals was like four thousand bucks plus or minus. So uh, and that's a group that reviewed all of the information available. So when people actually have to put their money where their mouth is, the um uh, it seems like there's a pretty clear evaluation. Um, I thought that's just, I found that a very interesting point. But um Kathleen, I like the motion you came up with, and I echo everything Mike said about, you know, you're trying to come up with a good solution here. I've, my only concern is that the the like extra conditions could leave open a a like, obviously, this has come to us because of a failure of the bureaucracy, like broadly speaking. And I worry that if we leave too much room, that they may continue to abuse that. Um, and I don't know, you know, what your thoughts are around that particular thing. I'm hoping that we can put this issue to bed. Um, you know, as almost as quickly as I go to bed tonight, but uh um, it's, I I just don't want to have this back and getting another thousand emails because you know, like, there's a, there's some hole in the language that we passed that allows somebody to keep blocking it even when that's no longer the intention, assuming that the vote goes through.
Um, yeah, I mean, I I don't think so, because again, this is just what the normal process would be. I think that if it goes through, I think the vote would be clear and the and the sense of the motion would be would be clearer to everyone. Um, I mean, this is effectively, we're at an appeal stage, so um, even though none of us really understood the process until we got here. Um, so I think I I don't, if it went through, I I think that it would it would address the short term as well as hopefully the long term. Uh, Mr. Kelly?
Uh, for full disclosure, uh, I was offered a free pizza free if we voted for the affirmative on this. I haven't decided whether I'm taking it or not.
Uncashable, uncashable, sir.
I like, I like, but I I'm sorry, I saw Christina. I was really putting my hand up to call the question, but I will yield to Christina.
Ms. Downey?
Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm just not happy with the way this process has gone at all. Um, you know, over the objections of Parks and Rec and our administration, we haven't gotten documents in any meaningful way. We just get a bunch of email. I it it just, this has been really um disappointing, um, is is a nice word for it. I'm concerned we're setting a precedent for people who don't like answers to questions to bombard us with emails and not provide us with a plan or a recommendation. I know we we said this is part of the process. I'm just expressing my frustration um, that we've received no documents other than a bunch of emails or anything else. Um, and I feel like it's kind of like a gun put against through our heads because there's a carnival in a couple of weeks, and we have to make a decision. Um, my concern at the end of the day is about our job is to preserve our assets and preserve our processes and worry about um what precedents we're setting for future groups. Um, so I just wanted to make that point.
All right, that's fair. Okay, so there's a motion on the question, oh, question on the table, I'm calling the question. Um. Joe? Kelly?
Yes.
All right, Cody?
Yes.
Laura Costin?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Ms. Kowalski?
Yes.
Michael Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Downey?
I'm a no.
Ms. Hirsch?
Uh, I'm a no for this year. Like more information.
Okay, well, since the CMS thing was confusing, I put forth this motion, and there's lots of confusion. I will abstain, and then it still passes. So for um let me out to for two, two. Um. Thank you. I think that
Can I just have a point, before we adjourn, I have a point, just just so you know?
Mm-hmm.
I think we ended the central middle school discussion without a direction. I think if we, if we want the consultants to be performing work or we want something, I just think for those who against it, I don't think we have a direction to our professionals, because it's not like this is going to go away. So, you know, I think we we need to have a game plan, in all fairness to the community that's rushed to put together a building committee. Um, there's a lot of people anxious to roll up their sleeves and do work, and I think it it's incumbent upon us to do our work. So I just don't know what that is at this point.
You're referring to central middle school, correct?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, sorry, you jumped back. I I was
Go ahead. I'm sure I'm gonna quickly get the flag from Michael Antonasio, but okay, Cody, your hand was up?
I'll just kick it over to Mike. I'm sure he's gonna say the same thing I am.
Okay.
Um, so maybe the um, I think I think it behooves us to to go to to go back and have a better understanding. This was very, very there was some confusion there, and quite personally, I mean, explaining my vote, I was, like I said, I was, I was a little concerned about all this last minute um, um, explanation of the numbers and um, maybe, you know, what could be helpful next time, you know, the next time we have this discussion, because obviously we do have to keep having this discussion is a um, a clear, um, a very clear um extrapolation of um, how this building is um sized for six sixty and and where 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 it is, where it is not, where it is sized for, you know, the the six sixty plus. Um, you know, I think I, the last number we heard, we heard bandied about was twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred square feet. So so let's, 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 let's let's be very clear with the community and in writing where these differences are.
Mr. Kelly? Cody?
Oh, yeah, um. Close, well, I just, I I think the direction my understanding was six sixty plus a bigger cafeteria. And I think where I got confused tonight was, it was like plus a bigger cafeteria and a bunch of other things that were harder to explain, which I understand why there's a lot of numbers to keep track of, but I think the winning, it seems to me like the winning bid here is six sixty plus a cafeteria that uh can accommodate maybe slightly more, but that's like three hundred square feet, not three thousand or three hundred plus, you know, you need some allocation for central stuff, so it's like four hundred square feet or whatever, but that I think it was the extra two thousand beyond that, that that that's what threw me off.
All right, Ms. Hirsch? And then Ms. Costin?
Oh, I was gonna say, I I thought most of that was pretty clear. Um. I I think we, I guess, need to have some kind of just discussion as to when we're going to take this up again, so that we, you know, the building committee isn't wasting their time. Um, you know, meeting or having that understanding. The question I had at that point is do we want to wait for soil samples uh to come back, or do we I had at that point is, do we want to wait for soil samples uh to come back, or do we want to just uh I keep, keep having a back and forth here, you know, I don't know what, what the changes are, because it was pretty clear what the increases were and why, at least, I thought. Um, but, uh, you know, I I'm just wondering what you think the next steps are, because, you know, we've, I I don't know how many more times I can read through them and try to figure out where the changes are.
Um, I'll come back to that in a second, I'll let everyone keep talking, Joe.
The uh myself and Laura, our liaison for this project uh would like to have renderings and a site plan, we were going to make a motion regarding that. Uh, but I sensed in discussions that that motion would fail. Uh, I still would like that. Uh, a, and uh so I I I feel I'm kind of stuck where I am uh until I I can put forward guidance to this building committee on what I'd like to see, or we'd like to see as a building. And I'd like to put forward uh uh or understand for one hundred percent certainty uh that we are building on a different footprint or the same footprint. Uh, so, and uh on a final note, the uh uh, these very things keep changing, these, even though they're small issues, and I still, I can't uh back Mike more in saying that it's really important for us to be on the same page, because this has a long path to follow once we hand this off, and the long path, they, we want them to believe that we are one hundred percent behind which we're all behind uh the the project, but we're all, but we want to be a hundred percent behind what we're launching in into the process of the building committee, the architecture review, uh the uh, uh, the municipal improvement, the uh uh all the various groups we have to get through, I want to show uh uni- uni- uh u- unity uh on just step one. That's it.
Ms. Costin.
I want to just um piggyback on what Joe has said and some of what Karen Hirsch has said. I really do want to set the building committee up for success, and I do think it's wise to engage a firm that would provide us some renderings, so that we are not handing just a pile of numbers off to a building committee and say, do something with this, I really think um it behooves us to make sure that we like what we're seeing um before we hand it off. Um, I I just think it's difficult to hand a building committee a pile of numbers and say, come up with a school, so I'm really, you know I would have made that motion that we engage a firm to ver- provide us some renderings, so that we really are giving some specificity to the building committee, I know that um that that would come later on anyway, but I think um having an earlier look at it um is more beneficial rather than later, that's just my feeling.
Ms. Downey.
Um, just to be clear, um, if we don't take action for a month, like Michael Joseph was suggesting, and people want to wait till the soil and even by not taking action now, unless we want to schedule another meeting for next week or the week after I think we're sending a signal to the other town bodies that we don't have urgency to this project, and I think we all need to take a step back and think about that. Um, I know that it was always talked about to try to get um enough done to go into the state bonding process, which requires the building committee to be done with a certain amount of work by June thirtieth of next year. I think we are putting them in a, every delay we make puts them at a disadvantage, I I'm just observing that. Um, to the point about hiring some, we don't have any money to hire anything, Laura, we don't, so, a- and again, that's not part of the process, I think we have ample opportunity about the design, and to be honest I don't think the eight of us would even agree on what we think the building should look like, even with renderings. So I'm not sure that really moves the process forward, I think that's the charge to the building committee, we tell them what to build. If we don't like it, you know, we choose the architect with them, in the sense we approve it, we choose the design with them. Um, that is our role, that is the way the town processes, is that there are building committees, and that is their task. So I am concerned. Um, and I think we should all be thinking about how urgently we want to move forward on our next meeting.
Why would you say we don't have any money?
Because we as the board don't, we, the board don't have any money, the building committee has money. The building committee has the A and E money, I'm not sure that's really our money, um, maybe I'm wrong. Yeah, I thought it was to the, to the building project.
If they, I, look, if we can't hire and if they can't hire anybody until we say yes, then I think that we do have some.
But the building committee, but the building committee has, the building committee has, has to put out an RFP to hire somebody, and the question is, what are they hiring them to do, right?
What if it's, what if it's not um a threshold where we ha- even have to have an RFP? We don't know what this would cost, it might be.
We, the Board of Ed, have no money for this project, only the building committee has money.
It's allocated to the board, not the building committee.
That's what I'm not.
You happen to know, I don't know for sure, I'm relative.
I don't know that to be the case, so.
Dr. Jones, do you know the answer or no?
In our budget, not the building committees.
No, my understanding is it's gone to the building committee, but I'm not going to say I'm an expert on this, so.
I think we have, with that, you're you're getting into subtleties that I think no one's really looked at before.
Michael Joseph, and then I probably should wrap this up before I get in trouble with the uh Robert's rules, please. Okay, um, Michael Joseph. Cody's asleep.
No worries. Um, yes, just to um, um, wrap this up, if we're taking in a very informal sense of the meeting, and I don't even know that, just I don't even know called a sense of the meeting, but just hearing different people's comments and things like that, it sounds like there was vast um consensus around a building of six sixty with a larger cafeteria, they are I think, I think that's something we can think about for um next time we meet.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's a, that's a good wrap-up, I thought that's what we were presented recently, and that's why I'm a little bit frustrated, because that's what that's where our sense of the meeting was last time, that's what we were charged with, there wasn't a mistake in the Excel, Christina, I spent a lot of time in it, and I then spent time with Roger to get that fixed, and to get it back out to everyone today, so maybe we delved in it further than others, and perhaps that's why we were, you know, ready to go, but um, for, we are where we are, um, soil testing is acoming, and we have to get back together um for safety and security. Anyway, so uh while, you know, the building committee will probably be a little confused by this vote tonight, I think it's best that we just sort of say it is what it is, and um I will reach out to everyone with another time for a meeting.
The point is, is we just need direction, what are the next steps for this?
Um, so, the next step is I have to call another meeting. Right, I mean.
Are we get, but my point is, are we getting different ad specs, or are we still going to be discussing this version of ad specs? Okay, that's, because then I'm not sure where the confusion lies, that's, that's all.
I understand, that's my view as well, so, but, you know, um I guess this maybe gives everyone a little more time to see what's in front of them. I don't see, I mean, there's no, there's nothing else to look at, if that's what you were looking for, six sixty plus a larger cafeteria, that's, that's what's in front of you tonight, so.
Well, I mean, if you go back and listen to the conversation we just had, we got a number of different answers over the course of the.
It was not well put, no doubt, I'm, no offense, um, to everyone else on this call, um, but, um, and, you know like I said, I spent a lot of time on it, so maybe that's why I was a little bit more comfortable, um, but I can tell you, that's what's in front of you, you had a hundred and fifteen thousand. That was in the last thing, you're looking at a voting on a hundred and seventeen thousand tonight, which addressed the six sixty, the ability to expand if we ever needed to expand, and it had a cafeteria so that if we did go to what many of us at one point thought was appropriately sized enrollment um, that would be addressed in the long term, again, we're not building a building for two years, we're building one for eighty. So, I feel like this was the consensus, it found the middle, but we are where we are, so. Um, so, with the.
Motion to adjourn.
Um, yeah, unless, okay. Right, Joe, um, Christina called it, I have a second, is Joe, all right, um, Kathleen Stowe is a yes, Christina Downey, yes, Laura Costin. Yes, Michael Joseph, yes, Karen Kowalski.
Yes.
Cody Kittle.
Yes.
Karen Hirsch.
Yes, but who seconded the motion to adjourn, I need it from you.
Joe.
Thank you.
Uh, and Joe's, yes, all right, thanks everyone, have a good night, I'll be sending emails.